Glad to see you're in good spirits and sorry to hear about your injury.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right, welcome everyone. It's the September 2025 Meeting of the Hadley Public Schools. Do I have a motion to call this meeting to order?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Terrific. Thank you. Annie, can you take us through any adjustments to the agenda?
We just have one this evening. When Chris DeJardan is speaking about the selection of an energy services company, he'll also take the school committee through the RFQ. It's been added under G.
Terrific. Thank you. All right, moving next to the public comment. If there's anyone here from the public that wishes to make a comment, please raise your digital hand and keep your remarks to no more than three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move into presentation and discussion items. First up, we're here to, we're going to listen to a couple of middle school field trips. And here to tell us about that is Susan Duncan. Welcome, Ms. Duncan.
Hi, how's everybody this evening?
Wonderful.
So I'll start with the Boston trip. Boston is proposed to do October 28th and 29th, and there's a similar itinerary from last year, but it's two full days. And they were able to get the State House in this year. The prices right now are based off of last year's because they're not, they're booking it in the process of booking everything. So we'll have final prices, but they'll be roughly around the same exact amount, maybe up by $10 each. But it's pretty much going to be the same amount as last year. Does anyone have any questions about the Boston field trip?
No questions, but congratulations on scoring the State House. That really is a crown jewel of the Boston visit, so I'm glad for you. Colleagues, any questions or comments about the Boston trip?
No, it all looks good.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, it does. Do we want to vote both of them together or wait, Annie?
Why don't you go ahead and vote this one that you just heard about me and vote the next one?
Great. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the Boston field trip?
So moved.
So can it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Terrific. Motion passes. Thank you, Susan. And also the Nature's Classroom field trip. You want to tell us about that one?
Yeah, you did ask last year for a PowerPoint. It's been so long since I've done one of these screen shares. I do have one if you want to see it. If not, I could just give my screen that I do every year.
You should be able to share your screen if you want to show us any visuals or, and I would say like you can keep it brief. But if you prepared something, we would be delighted to see it.
Now, so bear with me. Oh, sure. I was taking a minute.
It's coming though.
There we go. So we're going to Ocean Park, Maine, June 3rd through the 5th. Again, a little, again, I took this in the parents' meeting, so it has a little bit like our little journey to explore the woodlands, estuary, and ocean habitats. It's roughly on 100 acre property. Again, this just talks more about the Rachel Carson Preserve, the Goose Fair Brook, and the Old Growth Forest, so the three ecosystems that we look at while we're there, and a little bit about each. From the estuary with all the birds to the intertidal zone and salt marsh to actually looking at the old, the old, you know, forest floor. So they get like all three ecosystems in one trip, which is really great. Again, our little itinerary of like what we do each day, some pictures of the food, the dining area. Field groups, which is a big part of our day, where they go out in groups and they do challenges and they do team building skills in the groups. And then these are some pictures of some of those skills. And then their classes they do, they have a variety of classes that they can do from, you know, animal dissection to water science experiments to orienteering, so all different sort of animal tracking, all different things that they can do. And then their evening activities, which Quiet Sing, they also have, we do Science Fair wherever they're, we also do, we do the World Civilization also while we're there. And then the third, so we do like a mix, like a half and half. With Science Fair, we do like a challenges also at night. And then our transition time and evening, evening activities, this is where we stay. They do where, you know, that's when the teachers really come in part, we are charged to them at nighttime, in the morning, in all the transition time. And we have started about two years ago, we started taking them to the beach at night because they wouldn't do the night walk anymore. So we do our own night walk. So when they release the kids at like 8:30 from our Quiet Sing, we take them to the beach after, which has been a lot of fun. We really enjoy that a lot with the kids. And then another thing, I think the parents are embracing this more and more every year, you know, 10, five or six years ago, parents were like, oh, no digital. But now the parents are all like, yay, no digital. So the kids really have to interact with each other. They don't, no cell phones, no electronics for the, basically two days. And here is the final thing, the program fee went up $10 from last year. Transportation is about $140 per kid. We've been able to offset that with the board trustees in the past. So the final cost right now is 515, but we haven't asked the board trustees for money. We haven't done fundraising yet. Again, we are going to do a SNAP fundraiser. We're going to try this year. It got approved. I sold it to my daughter's school. We can raise, we have the potential of raising like the full cost of this trip. And we're doing this also with the eighth grade trip. Also, we're doing the whole middle school at once, starting next month, next week, then next week, and doing it for a month and seeing how much money we can raise, hope. So wish us luck. I hope it goes well. So questions?
Good luck, and thank you for working to bring that price down. Really appreciate you working to make that affordable for families. Any questions for Susan?
What, what is a SNAP fundraiser?
Oh, it's um, they basically, we, we set up a platform. They have to get like 10 to 20 emails. And now these are friends and family. These are not like random emails. And they're basically just asking for a donation for their field trip. And we will do selling of items also. We can open a school store if we want to at the same time. I don't know if I'll get that off the ground all at once. We might do that later to just keep raising money. But my daughter's school did this and their lacrosse team made like $27,000 off of this, like within like a month. They, you know, can get overdone, but I think if we keep it to like just doing this a little bit, we have potential raising like enough money to cover like the majority of the trip for everybody. So they send three emails out, the first asking for, so the kids write a little something which we will help them with. They send out the email to whoever they put down on their list and they ask them for a donation. So they cannot donate at that time or they can decide to donate. So total of three emails get sent out. I've actually been on the receiving end. Harry West actually is doing this and he put me down. So I was able to like do his fundraiser for him, which was really great for the football team and it's very nice. So there's three emails, they're very nice emails. They give a little something about why they need the money and you can just donate as much as you want, which is the key.
I really like the ease of that fundraiser. No standing on, you know, in front of storefronts or selling cookies, washing cars or.
It's efficient. It's not going to anybody. It's through email. So like for kids, I mean, so even if a kid could only get five emails, like even if the student, you know, it's enough. And maybe they'll get a donation out of it. Maybe they won't. It's okay if they don't. So there's again, no pressure with our fundraising. There's a no pressure zone here. They try it. If it works, great. If they can't get any donations, that's okay too. We'll try another way down later in the year.
Terrific. Any other questions about this field trip?
No.
All right. Well, seeing none, do I hear a motion to approve this Nature's Classroom field trip?
So moved.
Thanks Christine.
So good.
Thank you, Ethan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, she passes.
Susan, may I just say, may I just say before you leave, Susan, I have to tout how remarkable you are. So middle school machine team chair, Science Department Chair, this woman's energy enthusiasm for her job and her students is just boundless. It's exhausting to watch her. I don't know how she does it. And I'm just so grateful. And the amount of detail, if anybody is wondering about these field trips, all the curriculum connections are connected to our agenda. You just do such good work, Susan. So grateful for you. So thank you and thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
I would like to add to that and say that that enthusiasm is palpable. And I say this because you are my youngest son's middle school science teacher. And I got to experience you through Zoom in the background. And what, what he learned and what I learned in that class, it was just, you know, Zoom is not easy, but you, you were great at it. And your enthusiasm came across through the screen. So anyways, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. I do love my job. I love teaching the seventh graders. They're great. And now high school, high school class too right now, but I do love it.
It shows.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item of the agenda, which are first readings of policies. Who's going to take us through that today?
One of our esteemed policy subcommittee folks.
I'm happy to, Christine, if you just want to come in behind. We, we're going to start with the first date, I believe. And you guys will see quite a few changes. The, the most important thing I think to point out about this one is kind of the language around the school nurse and those that are trained in, in, in the school to be the responders, right? In the past, it might just say any person or any member of the school community, but now it's kind of more focused on those that are trained. If I'm missing something, feel free to jump in. Other than that, it's just kind of an update from the lawyers and then kind of there at the end, just an ad there where you can see that everything will be reported to the superintendent.
Great. Christine, anything to add?
Uh, no. Ethan, Ethan covered it perfectly.
All right. This is just first reading, so we are not, you know, required to weigh in at this juncture, but it'll come back next month. But before we move on to the, the next one, Tara and Paul, do you have any questions or clarifying, clarifying questions or comments on this?
No, the, the last one, no.
Yeah.
Neither.
All right, terrific. Thank you. Let's move on to the next one.
This is student transportation in private vehicles. This, it can be a bit confusing, but I think the, the one thing we want to point out with regards to this policy is this is for transportation private vehicles when conducting school business. So this isn't you picking up your student after school and throwing a couple of kids in the car to take them all home. This is if you're a chaperone or you're a coach, or you're doing something unofficial school business, that there's an expectation that you register your car and have insurance and along the, things along those lines.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying. I didn't get that at first, so appreciate you mentioning that. Any other questions or clarifying comments? Tara, Paul?
Just curious, Annie, is all this stuff new then? The core reform and insurance? I imagine Corey was already required.
Right. Um, Corey, so if you, anybody who's doing official school business would always be required to be Corey checked. Depending if it's overnight, because we have a separate Corey criminal background and a fingerprint threshold. One of the things that is slightly, or a lot of the new bit is around if you're doing official business for the school, your insurance liability limits. And yes, again, everybody always would have had to, but in the student transportation and private vehicles, it wasn't spelled out also here. So if you were a chaperone or a volunteer, it was spelled out in our Corey policies. But here, if you're a chaperone who's transporting students, you also need to make sure. We're just putting it.
Great, thanks.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, let's move on to the third item.
And this is just an update of the free and reduced price food services to be the universal free school meals. And a lot of what you'll see here has to do with adopting the Massachusetts Universal Free Meals Program and kind of just updating our language to include that. In addition to kind of like the, the overarching government national school program, but also the Massachusetts Universal Free Meals Program.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments on this? All right. Thank you so much, Ethan and Christine. We will discuss again next month and hopefully move this along. Thank you. All right, we're going to move next to item C, communication. Annie?
Just an update. So we talked at length about the change in the cell phone policy last month. The school committee had excellent ideas about how to make sure that parents and students were fully aware of the change to provide them also with the opportunities to give us feedback about that policy. So I just put in one place the ways in which either Ms. Camuso or I communicated the changes to students, to staff, to parents, also listed dates of Q and A for parents. Cell phones did not come up. A different topic was top of mind for parents at that meeting. I have another one of those that I'll do next week. Parents can bring up any topic that those, they're not planned, there's no agenda, anything that's top of mind. So that's all. Just wanted to make sure that I provided the school committee with this information. I know you were keenly interested in this last week and also happy to do anything else that you.
Thank you, Annie. I wonder, while a topic didn't come up during the Q and A, what has parent feedback been like?
So I have not received any feedback, positive or negative regarding the change. Ms. Camuso has not indicated to me if she has received a number of emails or any emails about this. I would imagine, I feel confident saying that if there had been a considerable amount, we check in with each other just about every day, that she would have mentioned that to me. I can certainly ask her privately, and I haven't received any.
Great. Any other comments or questions from school committee colleagues on this? No? All right. Thank you for bringing this to us, Annie. Appreciate the level of care and intention with which we rolled this out. And thank you for continuing to keep us abreast with how this new policy goes. Okay, we're moving on to item D, capital requests. Annie and Chris?
Yeah, so just a general reminder for the school committee and the general public that there are a lot of discussions happening right now regarding town finance. There's votes and special, special town meeting happened, and there'll be a ballot vote on September 29th regarding an override. Regardless, every year, an annual, excuse me, just special town meeting that typically happens in October. That's usually where the town votes on which projects they plan to fund, capital projects, and how. So what the town asks me and Chris for every year is they ask us to just review, is the capital plan that the town has in its possession, is that still on? So Chris and I got together, went through projects that were initially listed, maybe they'd been moved. We didn't get to them last year, projects that we have listed in this year. And these are only projects that we believe it makes sense for, to request town funding for. These are not all of the projects in our capital plan. So there are multiple projects that we fund with other sources, whether that's school choice funding or enterprise funds, if we have revenues in a particular account. This is just, these are just projects that we would be looking for the town to consider funding. Linda, the town treasurer, is very clear that every department and the town interim town administrator, department should ask for what they need, for what is on their capital plan. This is not meaning that the town will or can fund everything that's requested, every, every department submits a request. Initially, just like with the budget, the town doesn't set parameters. They don't tell us this is how much we, we're going to give you. They don't say anything like that, just like with the budget. They say, just tell us what you need. And then I do believe, and I'm sure when Shadul does his update, he might be able to provide some insight as well, but that FinCom, the Townwide Capital Committee, and the Select Board all have conversations about how resources should be allocated and for what purposes. And then we get feedback as departments about what, if anything, they'd like to see us do with our capital. And Chris, I don't know if you have anything else, or Shadul, if I misspoke, certainly you can correct anything in terms of on that, on the topic.
No, I think what you said is, is accurate. I will say this, and this is just being, understanding what's the vote is on Monday and what we're kind of up against with, with, in terms of the people that voted on the Finance Committee for this override and the people that voted against it. I voted. It's very clear, I voted for this. I will say this is that I have not seen the detail that's required by all the departments from the people that have voted no and will be requesting it because I would love to see what their plans really are. And the reality is that, and I'm kind of bringing this to everybody's attention, is that the Finance Committee, the members that have not gone along with this override have no plan. They really don't. And I think the, what I would go and tell people of the school committee is, is that you need to be, people need to be, the town people and the school, people who rely on the school and all these other departments need to understand that no plan had been put in place on, if this doesn't, this doesn't, at least not by the Finance Committee, if this doesn't pass. I just want to make sure everybody understands that. I think we are working towards it. I know Linda and Jennifer in Town Hall have been working on this, but I have yet to see anything from the Finance Committee. I have, myself, been looking at things with, with other, another Finance Committee member, but there is no real plan.
Thank you, Shadul. Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple of things to it, and that is, you know, like Anne said, the items in the capital plan that you see, those are items from the overall plan we have that are just town capital items. And I just wanted to mention that, you know, at the last meeting, somebody commented on the balance of our school choice account. And, you know, one of the reasons why we keep a balance above what is required by policy in that account is a lot of these capital items are paid for from school choice instead of asking the town for the funds. So, you know, over the next several years, we have over two and a half million dollars in the capital plan that will be paid for from school choice funds as well. So I just wanted all of you to be aware of that.
Thank you, Chris. One of the questions I had for you, Annie, and, and you, Chris, is, you know, I understand that some of these things have been a can kick down the road, previous years, projects that we have not yet pulled the trigger on. One of those is the locker room project, which we are, we're, we all have agreed, we want that to happen this fiscal year, and we have a plan for going out to bid and getting that done in some overlapping period with this coming summer, this next summer. So that to me seems like a definite. Some of the other questions, I, I have questions about, and I wonder what would it look like, you know, which ones of these are similarly urgent? Or similarly sort of like we're committed to it in some way that I'm not aware of? And what would it look like for us to smooth out our asks so that it was a, so that there wasn't such a shock between years, you know, a million to 142,000? Can we, can we smooth out the numbers? And, and does that make sense to do in light of what those projects represent?
I can add something and then Chris, please jump in. I would say one thing that we don't know, that may very well be, I would say, an example of a parameter that the town may set for us, may provide that feedback. And I think that's completely logical and I'm grateful that you want the town to hear us saying, we always want to be a good partner with all of the departments. What I'm unclear about is I do know that often the town does a really good job in the financial leadership in the town of looking when something is going to fall off of debt and then trying to keep that even and adding something else on to it. So what I don't know yet, when Linda and others, and I imagine that involves Finance Committee as well, when the folks look at, hey, here are all the asks, here's the picture of the current debt, here's what's coming off. This is how much we want to put, you know, to keep it, to maintain it, to maintain our payment level. I don't have all of that information, but I think what you're saying, Humira, is that, okay, so let's make sure we're open to any parameters the town feels they need to set. We're here to work with the town. We're never putting a stake in the ground that says we, we must have this or else, I don't know what, we're going to take our bat and ball and go, I don't know what we'd do. But we're never, we're never trying to be challenging or difficult. We want to work with them. And as we get more information from the committees that weigh in, we're happy to, to do whatever's asked of us.
Well, well said, Annie. I think that's exactly what I'm intimating, a willingness to move things around. I know this year in particular is a trying year for the town. I don't want to add to that. If there's a project that can be delayed by an additional year, so I would like us to remain open.
I, I can comment on some of the bonds. I will say most of the, I'm just looking through kind of the list that I have, that, for most of our long-term bonds. And most of the bonds have been, they're fairly recent, meaning within the last 10 years. And so most of those bonds, you're looking, and those are usually 20 to 30 year term bonds. So you're looking at, you know, at the earliest, something coming off in maybe something of significance. Well, not really, honestly, it's not even that significant, but, you know, 2034. A lot of the larger bonds, like for the senior center, the library, those are 30-year bonds. And I think those are probably within the last five or seven years, I think that they have been issued. So you're, you're not, there's not, there's not a significant amount coming off in the near term, I should, I should say that. And I think most of the, most of the borrowing is, is long-term. I think we have the, the total borrowing is around $1.7 million a year. And I think that includes short-term borrowing as well. And some of that fluctuates, obviously, with, with, with different things. Equipment and I know most of the major. The equipment and I know most of the major equipment and also large buildings is much longer.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to add one more item, and that is that the capital planning lookout is missing one key component, and that is the replacement of the boilers or converting the heating system. That part, you know, we're going to update once we select the ESCO. So although it looks like we're dropping from a million dollars to 142, in reality, we have a couple million dollars of heating improvements somewhere in the next few years on the capital plan as well, that we just don't know where that's going to fall at this point in time, which is why they're not on there. But, you know, once we have that, then it would be easier to smooth them out a little bit, sure.
That was a 1.8 million dollar boiler that we were looking at in three or four years ago dollars, before we began looking at alternatives in light of the incentives offered by the federal government. But you're, you're right, that is, that's going to be a big one. Once we figure out what our strategy is, that's going to impact this. But I, I have to tell you, when I first started on School Committee, you know, years ago, there was no 10-year plan. It was a year-to-year plan. There was not a lot of transparency. I really appreciate our, our team, Annie, Chris, and, you know, working with your crew, having a, a 10-year vision and just reminding us of what those priorities are. So none of it comes out of left field and, and the public is aware of expenses that we will have to make. So thank you for continuing to keep our eye on those projects.
I just wanted to add, Humira, that there was about $9 million of things that were voted on but not issued as well. So those are, like, there's a $2 million ladder truck, there were $6 million for the water tanks, there was some other smaller amount. Those are, those have been voted on and kind of put in the queue, but have, they haven't been issued yet. Because we.
Got it. So that's, that's new debt that the town will likely incur with its own timer of five to 10 or 20 years, whatever the time horizon is for trucks versus buildings. I guess that too will be, well, if I'm borrowing anyways, maybe at this excellent rate, maybe I should add in one of these small school projects. It, it's a point taken that we really need to work with the town. The town should have full transparency about what the needs are and then decide based on those fiscal decisions when the right, when the right time is. And it's our responsibility perhaps to just put a priority on some things so that, so that we can determine whether it needs to take place, you know, whether it should take place in the next one to two years and therefore add it in as an opportunistic, you know, purchase.
And the only other light I could add to that is like, some of the things, like the water tanks, that was, that was for a $9 million replacement of water tanks, where $3 million was supposed to be for grants, but we were not issued this grant mainly because the state basically said, you're too rich, raise your taxes. Essentially, that's, that's what was, was told. And I, and the issue, the things that were issued, they also don't, you know, not to paint a bleak picture, but just, just trying to make it reality is that those are pre-terror, pre, you know, what's going on today prices. So that doesn't, so there's probably at least for the water tanks, a $3 million deficit. So that $6 million borrowing might easily turn into nine because those are desperately needed and, and pretty high priority. But in the fire truck and all of that stuff, that, who knows at this point? But I just wanted to, you know, this is kind of a little bit also overriding on, but I just wanted to make people understand kind of the global picture of the town's finances and how, how much, as, as, you know, I'm kind of here as kind of an advocate for this, but, you know, how much all of this, it, it's hard, it's very hard for everybody to plan. Under the financial stress that we're all in, including yourself, you know, this, the School Committee and everybody else, we really need some financial stability to, to move, move the town forward.
Well, thank you for the work that you do, along with your teammates. I know it's not easy and not everyone sees things the, the, the same way or can achieve consensus, but I really appreciate all the work that you are doing with the Select Board and the Capital Committee to try to figure this out.
Humira, can I chime in before we move on here?
Of course.
So I just, so Chris and Annie, I, I really do echo Humira on our documents and keeping track of our 10-year plan. And I do think that we do look at this very regularly and revise it very regularly. What can we push out? What do we need to do now? And what kind of keeps like kicking the can down the road, I think, as you said, Humira. But when I look at this list, you know, and I get it, the, the town is, is in a interesting place right now, but I really appreciate the notes section. And I don't think we should undermine kind of the rationale and the reasoning that these are on the fiscal year, right? So replace hall lockers at Hopkins Academy because the hall lockers are original to the building when the building was built. That's, that's really important to not leave out. It's not just, oh yeah, Hopkins Academy needs it. No, they are original. We don't even have enough. We have lots of school of choice children coming in. We don't even have enough lockers for our kids. Some of them don't work, they don't meet ADA standards. That's, that's almost goes with the sentence to me, replace hall lockers, right? Like, because, right? Like, that's really important. I look at replace tiles in classrooms in 20120 because there's asbestos under the floors and we have our kids sitting in these rooms. Like, that's important to point out. And, and maybe that's, maybe that's where our due diligence as a school committee comes in to really make sure that parents are aware why these are being asked for and, and how long have we been pushing these down, you know, the edge here? The HES classroom flooring replacement, and I know that's out further out, but we talked about that last year. Well, we can put things down, we can mitigate this, we can, you know, but I feel like that's, as a school, I, I do, you know, I do appreciate that we have a good working relationship. But because we have that good working relationship, I find that we're often pushing things down the line to make sure that we're being very responsible to the town. And I think that there's times for us to look at it. I, I mean, I see, I guess the only other thing I wanted to point out, HA window blinds. Again, original to the building, that's a safety concern for the school, okay? So heaven forbid, we're ever in a place where we need an actual lockdown, we need to keep our kids safe and we don't, we don't have blinds, we don't have the proper things in place to properly execute and enhance lockdown. So I, I mean, maybe, maybe that's on us as a school committee to try to, like, get this out to other fellow parents in the schools so that they understand why some of these things really shouldn't be pushed down. And I, I know it's, it's a large, a large ask this year. And I, I hear you on, on shaving some things down, but certain things, I look at it and just go, how much longer can we keep pushing it down from year to year and have it be viable? And at what point does that affect our school of choice numbers, right? Like, I've heard Hopkins being referred to in kind of a derogatory term, not because of our class offer, offerings, but, but the actual aesthetics of the building. Now, we've done the study and we know that the bones in the building are good, but it's the, the visual appeal is not there either, right? Like, you come and there's broken blinds and, ooh, I hope I didn't just lose you. Or, you know, the, the rugs are coming up or the lockers are original to the building. That plays an impact for, maybe more for parents than students, but still, at what point does it start to negatively impact us too? Just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Tara. I really appreciate that perspective. Anything else to add, team?
Well, see, I, I used those lockers, like in, like in the 90s. That was, I, I walked past my old lockers. That was, so it's a bit of nostalgia when I go back, when I go into the school because it smells exactly, it's, 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 it's nice, but it's kind of like, really? And you know what, Tara, I think, you know, I, I don't want to overtake your meeting, but we do have to ask as, as a community saying, what is, what is our kid, what are our kids worth to us? These are our children. And what are we really investing in? And, and is this, we've achieved so much that, you know, one, one thing that people don't realize is that the combined, I, I'm going to be pointing this out, but the, the combined assessed value of Hadley is in the billions. Think about that. Truth, and over a billion is just residential value. This town is worth over a billion dollars. And this is, this is, and these are the standards that we put our children. This is the buildings we put our children in. There needs to be a little bit of, kind of, come to reality. What, what are, what are you, where do you live and what do you expect? Because you need to change your standards of what you, where you really want to send your kids. But people unfortunately are not aware of what they really have.
Thank you, Shadul. I appreciate that perspective as well. I think it was early in my School Committee days when I did a lot of questions about, you know, how we fund our schools and tax rates and things of that nature and what, you know, I don't want this to be a long tax discussion, but what I, what I did learn is that there are a lot of wealthy families and there are a lot of families that go back generations that with land. So there might be land-rich, but, you know, perhaps cash-poor in a sense because, you know, you, farming is not a lucrative business. And, I mean, just the economics of it, I understand that there, there's definitely income disparity as well in our town. So I can, I can appreciate, I can appreciate that. Still, however, there is something about our town, our property values, our town's reputation. I, I think that our strong schools always play out in terms of economics and our, our, our home values. And I think it's our responsibility to continue to put a spotlight on that. So thank you, thank you for that. Anyone else that we might not have heard from on this topic? Okay, Annie, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you all. We're going to move on to the next item of the agenda. And that is disclosure of superintendent participation in EF Global Leaders Summit. Annie, tell us about this exciting opportunity.
Yes, so I did include it in one of the weekly updates quite a while ago because I think I was selected in the spring of last year. But the ethics laws require that I disclose to the public and then the School Committee votes that they are aware and it is okay that I accept, I will be paying for my own airfare, but that I accept hotel lodging and meals from the organization that's putting this on. And just as a reminder for the public, in terms of what is this, it is educational first, invites roughly 30 educational leaders from across the country on an international trip to discuss global competency and how we embed that into our curriculum and make that a part of what we're teaching in schools. It's an opportunity for us to learn from and with each other and at the same time to visit schools in another country, this will be in Panama, and learn from educational leaders in Panama. But I do need to make sure that I do a public disclosure in the School Committee. I would appreciate if the School Committee is so inclined to vote that, that's okay.
Annie, I just want to clarify before I open this up for comment that the, that you have been awarded an amount for lodging and meals but, along with the selection of 30-some-odd leaders. You are paying for your airfare out of pocket. Is there any financial impact to the school?
No.
Okay, very good. Any other questions from my colleagues about this? Okay, seeing none, do I hear a motion to approve the, this trip funded by EF?
Sound moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you so much.
Cool, congratulations, Annie.
Yep.
Thank you.
It'll be good, it'll be good. It's Columbus Day weekend, so it's a Friday to.
In Panama.
In Panama.
Just going to Panama for the weekend.
Just a little bit, like four nights, five. One of my favorite countries, I've actually been, our students go there too, so I'm very excited about that. We have service learning trips.
Yeah.
If it makes sense to share with us any tidbits that you learn either through the Superintendent Weekly Report or through our next meeting, I would welcome that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we're going to move next to Superintendent Updates.
There you have it, okay. Just some highlights, we did last week hold Sandy Hook Promise Assembly. So in the updates, if the public is interested, they can find out more about what Sandy Hook Promise is. It was a very wonderful story today in the Violence Prevention Project. They do a weekly email that students, a student in California actually utilized the tools that they learned through Sandy Hook Promise to say hello. So we ran two assemblies, one for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and the other one for eighth graders. The report I read today talked about how this student in California was able to recognize the signs of a classmate who was in distress and isolating and someone who had a plan to, to engage in a school shooting. And the student who had learned these skills alerted their school leaders and that problem was averted, that tragedy. So we got very good feedback from staff and many students. That happened last week. That was also through, that was no cost to the district, that was grant funded. I'll be participating in a Superintendent Network this year with some mid-career, I guess, long-in-the-tooth superintendents so we can focus on improving our professional practice and not get rusty. Principal Dowd was selected by DESI to be on the Principal and Teacher Advisory Council for Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I've linked in the last, the September radio show to this and we have received approval for our Innovation Pathways Support Grant. $50,000 that we received for that. I also was selected to be on the statewide AI in education task force this year. So I'm very excited about that and will certainly share with folks what I learned. And earlier in the month, we submitted a grant for supporting students' behavioral and mental health training.
It's been a busy month. Thank you, Annie. Congrats on multiple fronts and also congrats to John Dowd for being selected by DESI. That's great to represent at the state level. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on the Superintendent Report? Okay, terrific. Thank you, Annie. Moving on to the Business Manager Report. Chris, can you take us through all of these items?
Sure. So the first item I have is revolving accounts report. Basically, not a lot has changed, you know, summer months, really not a lot of activity going on in them, although at least in the lunch account in July, we got caught up on the payments as they come in. They're typically a month or two behind. And so it's really pretty nice balances that we're showing in the lunch and the preschool accounts, much better than we were last year at this time. So that's certainly good news. Again, you know, the school choice balance in $2.1 million and change. Of that, 1.6 million is designated to be used in the budget for this year to offset expenses. And then we have another, oh, I don't know, $300,000 in capital items that are on the capital plan to be coming from school choice this year as well. So, you know, again, just to give everyone an idea of what that money actually looks like because it looks like such a big number, but as we start to use it, that'll get riddled down. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on the revolving accounts?
Any questions for Chris?
No.
Nope. All right.
All right, then we go to the expense report. It's, it's a little early. I mean, basically, even though a quarter of the year is done, most of the salaries don't start to kick in. Most of the salaries don't start to kick in until September, other than administration and some hourly people over the summer, so. Um, you know, when it shows uh, at the end of the report that we're only fif- about sixteen percent into um. What we have budgeted, uh, you know, it sounds like, oh, wow, we're ahead of the game because we should be at twenty five percent at this point in time. In reality, um, you know, that'll catch up to us, especially in June where we have. The five uh, you know, the, I'm sorry, the four paychecks over the summer that are paid at the last June payment, so. A lot of times when we have expenses, it's, it's not just easy to say, oh, at the end of December, we should be halfway through the budget. So it's not really how it works. Um, and so I will just, you know, keep you appraised of that throughout the year, but um. There's a few items that are over budget already. Um, couple of maintenance items. We had some large uh, plumbing expenses. At the elementary school we had to address and so those were taken care of. Um, and uh. I, I think it's just maintenance items really, maybe an IT item, uh, you know, there were a couple, but again, that happens throughout the year and um. What I usually do is um, at the midway point, I'll just take a look at the accounts and, and say, oh, wait a minute here. This maintenance line is um, you know, way over budget, but well, it's actually. The plumbing expense, it should go to the plumbing instead of the general maintenance, things like that, that, you know, I tend to kind of true up expenses. Um, sometimes they just might get put in a, in an appropriate account, but not necessarily, not necessarily the account we planned on using before, so. Um, you know, we'll go through those as well and uh, and we'll just keep reporting to you. Uh, I don't know if there was any questions on the general fund expenses?
No questions?
Okay, um, the next item we have is the selection of the ESCO. Um, I've also added underneath that the RFQ timeline. Um, and the reason for that is um. If, if you order, look at the timeline and it, it basically says that um, the bids were due. On, um, let me just look here myself, because I'm trying to find it on here. The bids were due on, at ten AM on nine, nine, twenty five. Um, and so we did receive um, one. RFQ response about an hour before they were due. Um, and that was from Train. Then we received, I received an email the following day from. A second vendor who had um, done the walkthrough with us. We had mandatory walkthroughs. And um, and basically, you know, when, when the, when the person was doing the walkthrough, he was talking about his dog and. How he got him near Amherst and so he sent me a picture of the dog and, and said, thanks for the opportunity to do the walkthrough and submit the RFQ response. And I had not received one, so I wrote back to him and I said. Did you submit an RFQ response? Because I didn't receive one and he said, oh. It was probably too big to go through the email. I'll send you a link to it now. And the problem is that that was the following day. That was after the um. The RFQ responses were due. Um, so I did reach out to the Inspector General's office. And I also reached out to our attorney and both agreed. The attorney said we should not accept the second response. Because it came clearly after the deadline and um. The, the state, the IG's office said that um, we could accept it um, if we wanted, but um. We could also reject it because it came in late. Um, our attorney recommended not accepting it because um, the, the first vendor. That submitted on time would certainly challenge that if we selected that vendor, so. Um, we did bring forward the vendor who submitted their um, response on time. I just wanted to fill you in on kind of what went on with this, because it was a little bit uh, odd, you know, that we. We did not receive the second one until the day after, but um. We did receive one on time, uh, Train who submitted it. Uh, before the deadline, I mean, you know, they, they really did everything right. They sent it, you know, about an hour early. They followed up with an email to me saying, please confirm you received it, also a text to my cell phone. Um, and again, you know, I appreciated that because I wasn't meeting, so I think they were holding their breath until I finished with my meeting. And, and could respond that we did receive it. Um, but that's certainly, you know, i- i- if, if we had not received it, I could say, geez, I. I either didn't get the email or the attachment wasn't there, you know, whatever the problems would be. Um, in this case, it, it had gone through no problem, so. Um, and as you can see, if you look at the report, it's, it's over seven hundred pages, so it's, it's a big proposal. But um, that's where we stand. Um, you know, one, basically what they, what they call this in the procurement. Uh, world is, they would be a, uh, responsive and responsible bidder. Um, in that they have the skills and the resources to do the job and they submitted everything in the bid on time and uh. That's, you know, that's basically kind of the rules we follow, you know, so. Um, I don't know if anyone has any questions on this, um, you can certainly ask away.
Questions for Chris?
So with a single bidder, Chris, it's really, either we take it or we reject it and we go out to bid again?
Yeah, I mean, technically, it's not a bid, it's an RFQ, so we go by qualifications. Um, and, and this particular. Vendor, of course, you know, I mean, looking through their, their document, this is the company that presented to us.
Right.
Maybe in February or something.
Uh, what experience?
Yeah, um, and so that, that's what we go by. Um, we don't go by price with this. We go actually by who is the best. Choice for the school district. Um, I mean, that's kind of nice because. Sometimes, you know, you may have a vendor that, you know, when you go out to bid, you have to take the lowest price unless they are. Clearly not up to doing the job. Um, and with the, with the RFQ, we can, we can use their qualifications instead, so. It, it's a nice change.
Any other questions for Chris? Okay, um, do we need to vote on this?
I believe you do, yes.
Okay, um. Seeing no questions on this, is there a motion to approve uh, the selection of Train as our ESCO?
So moved?
Seconded.
Thank you, Ethan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, motion passes. Thank you, Chris, for undertaking this project. Congratulations on securing and. Forward to all the work and advice that comes out of this.
It will work on uh, the contract and, and getting that all finalized next.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, um, actually is also an item for you, updated locker room bidding process and timelines.
Sure, so um, at the last meeting, I had gone over how long the project was expected to take. Uh, and the question was asked how long the bid process takes, so I just attached a little um. Basically a walkthrough of what we need to do um, for the bid process and give or take how long each item will take. Um, you know, in terms of getting the project listed on the goods and services page, Conbuys, the local newspaper ad. Um, we typically put it on our website as well. Uh, and that takes a couple of weeks, depending on when you submit to, say, the goods and services page. You have to submit it by Wednesday at four o'clock to get it in the following Monday, otherwise it goes to the Monday after that. Um, and so, you know, sometimes depending on the timing of getting everything prepared, it may. Um, you know, take a couple of weeks to get that on. And then, of course, you need to allow time to have the vendors. Actually see the postings, um, and we would have, you know, certainly with um, a project of this size, we would have mandatory walkthroughs where. You know, if you're going to bid on this, we want you to come and see what you're bidding on, so they would walk through the locker rooms. Certainly ask us any questions they had and, and kind of see what they're getting into. Um, and that would take, you know, give or take. Um, about another three weeks. Um, and then, you know, we would um, get the bids, um, whoever submitted them. We make sure that they're all complete and they're, they weren't missing any forms or anything like that. Uh, then we'd present it to the school committee at, you know, the meeting following when the bid took place. Uh, and work on getting the contract signed and everything, so we're, we're looking at, you know, over the course of it, plus or minus eight weeks, so a couple of months. Um, it takes typically for the bid process.
Thank you, Chris, for pulling this together. Based on this, um, would, what is your um, working? Understanding of when we should put this out to bid?
I would think if we um, if, if we went out to bid, or at least started the process in January. Um, that would allow us to have um, it completed pretty much by March. Then it would allow the vendor to order all of the supplies that they need and any kind of lead times that we would have in terms of ordering supplies would be. During the school year, which is much better than, say, ordering them in June and waiting two months for them to come in. Uh, and that way they could pretty much hit the ground running uh, as soon as the school gets out. That, that would be my recommendation.
I, I like that idea as well, so that we, uh, you know. It appears that for every kind of construction project imaginable, that there's a huge backlog and it's, it's hard to get. Good vendors, so getting into the queue of a reputable vendor early in the year. Um, and securing lockers, perhaps steel lockers in light of steel tariffs and. You know, the sooner the better, I would say. Um. And if there's some wiggle room, so be it, but at least we're in control of a timeline that gets this done. Any um, comments or questions, colleagues?
I like the timeline too.
Yeah.
I'm just going to pipe up because Chris won't toot his own horn because he's way too humble. I know you all know this, but I'll say it for the public. This is a tremendous amount of work, putting together the RFQ, particularly for the ESCO. Was something new that we hadn't done before, the expectations from the state. I, I don't want to sound hypercritical, but I think the word absurd comes to mind, so it's just, it was tremendous amount of work and Chris. Chris did it. Chris did it all, so thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, many thanks. All right, great. Um, and I don't believe any vote is required here. That's mostly an FYI. Terrific, thank you. We're going to move next to action items, um, the approval of the payroll and expense warrants for August twenty twenty five. Do I hear a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Thank you, Paul.
Second.
Christine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Terrific. We've already approved the grade eight field trip as well as the nature's classroom field trip. We've already voted on the ESCO. And we've approved the superintendent participation in the Global Leaders Summit. Um, we'll move next to school committee updates and general announcements. Um, the first item up is playgrounds. CPAC and CES, Tara.
Um, yeah, so I don't think I have any playground updates as of right now. Um, because we've got the surface in and we talked about that last time and I've heard a lot of positive feedback. Um, CPAC, um, they're working on getting their newsletters out. They're a busy group, um, but they are going to be having a table. At the open house uh, at HES on Thursday, so if you go, um, then stop and say hi, see what they're about. Um, CES, we meet on Wednesday night, so I'll report back next month.
Terrific, thank you. Um, on to finance. Well, we talked about the override and capital and. Actually, there's another update on capital, but generally, um, I don't really have any updates on finance. As you know, the override did not pass. There is another vote at the town level. Um, the date for that, Annie, is?
September twenty ninth, Monday, September twenty ninth. And, yeah, so please do uh, vote. We encourage everyone to vote. And I will say that I anticipate, I believe the select board and FINCOM were supposed to meet tonight. It sounds like they're meeting on Wednesday night. And at that point, I believe that they will be providing some more input. On what the expectation will be in terms of cuts to every department in fiscal year twenty. Six, the current year, what might be required in fiscal year twenty.
Very good, thank you, Annie. Um, moving on to fields, um, Paul and Chris?
What's up, Ben? Chris and I had a chance to catch up, so another shout out to him for good work. So we are going out. To bid for some new work, so if we ever get raining again, you might notice that there's some um, some drainage issues still on the varsity baseball field. Certain field out there, and so we're working on that. Berkshire Design is going to offer us for free uh, some. New specs on that, some new design work, so we'll get that and we'll go out to bid for that to, to get that up. We had to do that on the other. Portion of the fields and the softball fields up there, so um, this is pretty similar to that, so. We're close, just a little bit more left to do.
Thank you for continuing to follow that and um, I'm really glad that you um, worked with Berkshire Design. To have them do the designs at no cost. We've been working with them for years.
Yeah.
So the, the fact, you know, I'm, I'm glad that they're honoring the, you know, uh, the, the uh. The process and, and sta- and putting in the work to just make us um, you know, whole on this, so thank you.
Yeah, I think it goes to Chris as well to keep pushing on this, so thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
If, if I can just add something to this, um, you know, Berkshire came out a couple of weeks ago, I think it was a Saturday. We got a good rain, uh, you know, really heavy rain and um, I called Jeff Mish. Um, you know, Jeff lives a couple of minutes away from school and just asked him if he could run over to the school. And take a look at the field. Um, this was Saturday afternoon. It had been raining all day at that point. Um, and he sent some pictures, you know, again, you know, wherever there was clay in the, in the varsity infield, there was water, you know, it just wasn't draining through. And um. We sent those over to Berkshire Design and uh, Berkshire came out on Monday and took a look at it. They sent three people over. Um, took a look at the fields and um, you know, the, the person we were dealing with last year. Called me and just discussed uh, what was going on and basically said that, you know, the, the, the solution, the one solution to do. Would be to add the increased drainage to the field. Um, he did say really that, you know, this field. Because it was in a flood plain, was really just a tremendous challenge. And he said, you know, if I had. My way with this, I would have increased the height of the field by a couple of feet, which would have allowed a much more steep um, drain type slope. For lack of a better word, um, leading from the field right across to that ditch that we have in the far corner. Um, but, you know, our hands are pretty tied as were theirs with it, so they. They gave the minimum amount of slope that they could for, uh, you know, to keep the water moving. Um, it's, it's really just, you know, unfortunately, it's, it's the spot, it's, it's, it's uh, you know, where the fields are located. That just really presented a challenge, not only for the designers, but for the contractors. I mean, it just, it was not an easy thing to do. Um, but, you know, the, the um, the solution worked pretty well for the JV field. We don't have any flooding there. So um, adding it to the varsity field, um, you know, we expect to do the same.
Terrific, thank you.
Okay.
All right, moving next to capital. Um, Christine, we looked at the tenure capital plan today. Is there anything else to add?
No, no, not at this time.
Great, thank you. Um, and Ethan and Christine, we've already gotten a policy update. Is there anything else? That we should uh, think, be thinking about for future policies?
Yeah, we'll be bringing uh, some policies to you guys next month. Hopefully, we're looking at uh, financial aid policy for pre-K. Some, some of the preschool policies. Um, and then, and then some of the policies around bidding and expense reimbursement. So that's kind of coming down the, the path soon.
Terrific, thank you. Um, general announcements are, uh, we still do not have a select board liaison to the school committee. Will, you know, we look forward to the select board assigning us uh, a liaison. Um, and finance liaison, Shadul was here earlier. Always appreciate his uh, input and feedback and advice. Um, next meeting dates are October uh, twenty seventh, five thirty is our regular school committee meeting. The policy subcommittee will be meeting an hour beforehand at four thirty. Um, we are not going into executive session, so that means that we end at six thirty eight. I, I like that. That is a, that is a good, efficient meeting.
Are we wearing Halloween costumes next month?
Definitely.
You tell me, is that what you would like it? Uh, is that, is?
I don't know. I don't know.
Um, all right, well, let's, let's uh, let's think about that one. For, for now, I would say no. Um, but if, if we're, if you're uh, so motivated to have a Halloween costume. Sort of within this confine, within this square, feel free to bring an accessory. Um, for even just part of the meeting, I would say. sort of within this confine, within this square, feel free to bring an accessory, um, for even just part of the meeting, I would say. I'll, I'll, I'll plan to do that as well. Um, okay, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Mary. Thanks for running. Yeah.
Yeah.
See y'all. Good night.
Night.
Take care.